Can everybody hear me now? Very good. Very good. We're going to open this meeting. And I want to thank each and every one of you that got the word out or that communicated this and got here this morning because you are the people that it's for. We want to find out what the community wants instead of just us making decisions and then no one liking it. So your interaction today means everything because this is how in this process we're going to hopefully move us forward as a community with what everyone wants. So I thank you for your participation. And I hope everyone gets up here and waves their flags or does whatever Gina suggests we do for her interaction. And has your input, putting your ideas. This is how we can make it work. And this is how we're going to go forward as a community together. We'll open up to public comment and just move it. And then we're going to go, everybody is going to pass the button. And we'll get forward on this. For the meeting, do I need to open up to public comment or not? Or just welcome? So I'm going to turn this over to Gina. And she has to jump first. And then Gina?
Thank you. And I would just like to reiterate Denise's welcome. We're really pleased that you came this morning. This is an important occasion for the city. I think most of you probably know that the city has tried a sales tax measure several times over the years. Two in the last two years. And those efforts have been primarily for specific tax, which requires 66% of the people voting in the election to vote in the affirmative for it to pass. And we've come very close. The last two times that we've tried it, we had 61.7%. Two years ago and last year, we had 62.5%. It's not about the top of the top. Those specific taxes in the last two years would have dedicated the funds to road improvements and code enforcement, including animal control and things associated with code enforcement. So after the failure of the last sales tax measure, there was quite a bit of discussion, both in the community. I had people calling and talking with me certainly at the council level and at the staff level as well. And the question was, well, what if we tried a general tax instead? A general tax only requires 50% plus one of those voting in any particular election vote to pass. The difference is that a specific tax, the money is allocated specifically for the measure or for the projects or activities that will be defined in the measure itself. A general tax, you can advise as voters, and that's one of the questions which we'll go over here in a second. You can advise the council how those funds should be spent. But it is a general tax and the council has the final authority on how those funds should be spent. An advisory measure does give a little bit more security to the community voting for a general tax if it is specified within the advisory question what those money should be used for. So part of the reason for today's meeting is to solicit some additional public input in both of those areas. So that when the council does have this back before them and they're making a determination if they're going to move forward with a tax or not, how should they improve? Should it be a specific again or a general? So what we've done this morning is after our comments is to make this a little bit more interactive than our meetings normally are. And you'll all receive a series of little dots. And what we would like you to do is to come up to the board and put the dots on the areas that you agree with. So quickly going over what the questions are. First one generally is most important, I suppose. And that is, should there be a sales tax measure on the November ballot? The November 2014 ballot? Yes or no? Should it be a specific proposal? Again, requiring 66%? Yes or no? If it's a specific tax, should it be a half cent? Or a half percent or a full percent? The last few times we've tried it, it's been for a one percent. General tax, again, 50% plus one. The same question, should it be a half percent or a full percent? And then, what should the funds be used for? Should it be roads? Should it be code enforcement? What should be animal control? Crime suppression? And I'd like to explain why crime suppression is now on the list. That's a new category of where the funds could be used. The reason for that is if it is a general tax, we already have measure P that was passed in 1994, I believe it is, which mandates to the city council that 63% of the general fund dollars must be allocated to the police department budget. So if we have an additional general tax coming in, 63% of that would be allocated to the police department. When we talked about that, we talked about how would that, if that is an aggression and that's what ultimately is passed, if the tax is passed. Rather than have it go into the same types of activities that measure P funds go into, what would we do to augment things for very visible in the community? We talked about creating a task force essentially, a team of staff that would be dedicated to crime suppression, code enforcement, and all things that go along with that. Make it very visible, make it very apparent to the community of the activities that are going on. The city did have a crime suppression unit some years back. It did have to be resolved because of budget concerns. It was a very successful one, it was in place. And there are statistics that show the decline in, or maybe the uprising would be a better word, in criminal activities when that unit hadn't been resolved. So we're interested to know if you would support that. Should there be two measures instead of one? Should it be split? And I crossed out where I had put one and ignore that part. We just want to know yes or no. Should it be split into two measures? And that is one of the questions that's been asked. Would there be the potential of higher success rate in the vote if it was two measures instead of one? If a decision is made by the council to place a general tax on the ballot, should there be an advisory measure also asking if the tax should be used for code enforcement, crime suppression, and roads? That was a fact that I talked about a moment ago in terms of giving some corrective to the council of how the community wants those numbers. If the measure is a specific tax, should the council consider appointing an oversight committee to annually review these signatures? Under the law, you can't do that for a specific tax under a general tax. An advisory oversight committee is not provided for under law. And then finally, in terms of the structured question, should there be a sunset clause? And I just wanted to comment that we've talked about this with the council a lot. And I think the committee that supported the measure last time had quite a good discussion about it. A sunset clause will mean that whatever the specified time is, whether it's 10 years, 15, or 20, the tax stops at that point. And if the community or the council at that time wanted to continue on with the tax, it would require going back to the voters to re-implement the tax. The downside of that in our community is the needs are so great that in 10, 15, or 20 years, particularly with roads, we will still have many projects to do because of the condition that they're in. And we're interested in your other comments, things that we may not have addressed here. And I'll have a pen so you can write them on here. I also have three by five cards if you're not comfortable in just writing your comments on a card and leaving them when you leave. And then finally, are there other potential uses for sales tax that we've not talked about or identified that you would be interested in the council considering? So that, and again, I will have thoughts for you to make your selections when we finish this formal part of the meeting. If you have questions as you are moving around, the council is here. I will be, I'm obviously here. Please feel free to have interaction with us and give us your comments that you feel we need to hear in order to be moving forward. So that, I'm going to disconnect for Gina. Good morning. I'm thrilled to see people here that I don't always see at council meetings. That's exactly why we have this meeting on a Saturday. And it's gorgeous outside. Some of us might have to take our shoes off to put our fingernails on. I know, I have a whole shoe. I would like to start by saying, this is really for you guys to be interactive, for you and for all of us to kind of see how we all feel about something rather than having individual conversations with people that we already know. Maybe we already know their opinions about certain things. I would like for all of us to have an opportunity to get the opinion of someone we don't know. So I'm going to start introducing myself. I'm Gina Mortino Dixon. I'm looking for someone in the room I don't know. All right. Hello, how are you? Do you know who you're interviewing? My question that I should have answered. This is supposed to be a very important meeting. Why is there not more advertising? I don't know. I can add my neighbor. As of your neighbor, can I answer your question later and start with introductions now? Would that be all right? If I answer your question later and start with introductions now? So your name was? Rose. So everyone could take a moment, look around the room, find someone in this room you don't know yet, and take a minute to go introduce yourselves. And just let the person that you're introducing yourselves to know how you felt about this meeting. Come on.
Hi. I'm Natalia. I like to ask on Facebook.
I love how Martha Booth just got in. Well, as you may notice, you have your little flags on your table in front of you. I didn't know how many to bring, right? And I hurt myself with the hot wax gun while I was making these this morning. That's how much I care about you guys. And if something is terrible, it's worth it to himself. Like, let me just relax. But if you grab a flag just in front of you, we're going to use these flags to non-verbally answer. Thank you. Okay, I was at a play at Oakley High School last night. These kids have these terrific microphones that run around their ears that set right in front of their mouth so they don't have to do any of this stuff like this and that. So I'm going to be suggesting we get we the best of the kids because some of us aren't wrong. We don't know how to use our microphones. So if everyone would grab a little flag in front of you, any colors you like would be fine. Whichever one speaks to you. I'm just going to ask a few questions. Kind of the same kind of questions I ask myself when I'm trying to make a decision. But I also want us all to get a feel for who we are. Who are we in this group collectively? So indicate with your flag in the air if you have children. Indicate with your flag in the air if you live in the city of Clearlight. So if you take a minute to look around. How often do you work in the city of Clearlight? Next question. I shop in the city of Clearlight. So we can see by looking around that we all have some pretty strong ties to the city of Clearlight. We all really are bought into the success of our community as a city. I've got a few more questions. And excuse me for reading them from here because I don't want to forget any of them. I have seen some lighted yards or areas on my way here today. I saw some lighted yards or something that's on my way here today. Light. I have a lighted area in my neighborhood. On my street. I see this as a huge concern in the city of Clearlight. Thank you. I have gotten a broken alignment on my vehicle in the last six months. And I can't afford it. I have seen large water-filled potholes in the city. Good. I mean, not here. I have one of said potholes on my street. Or the one. I want to solve these problems. I think a tax measure will help these problems. Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. I think there's something else that will help. All right, then. I want to hear about all of those things that are on your mind on these papers right here. Please.
I will talk about it. God is not going to come down and do it for us. We'll have to do it ourselves.
She said, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I said, God is not going to do it for us. He's not going to come down and clean this mess up. We made the mess and we have to clear it up. And if we live on a street where there's no roads, we need to help these people to please put some gravel in roads.
Why do you still think here until the other end?
Well, I lived on 37th between Irving and Phillips.
I lived on 37th between Phillips and Irving Street. And the potholes are really big there. I don't live there anymore. I live on Main Shore. But they also have potholes on Main Shore. What I'm concerned about are the motor homes that nobody's living in. And is that even, do you have to pick the flag that we're going on, protecting us against these motor homes? And there are separate tanks that are leaking into the lake?
Motor homes, that would be something for local health.
Or roll homes, you know, these trailers.
Please ask all these questions on these cars. That would be awesome. I have another question that I feel a bit earlier about communicating the meetings like this or decisions that are made or possible measures that go on the ballot from roads. So how about this? I feel that communication could be improved in the city of Clearlight. I feel like communication could be improved at home between me and my cabinet. Of course it can. We really are working on this to the best of our abilities. I don't think any of us here are professionals who sit on the council. We work together as best we can. We face the same kind of challenges that any group or organization faces, that any family faces. And so much as, and so much as communicating with one another, trying to generate a plan that will work and help meet the goals that we set together. So I do apologize that it wasn't perfectly marketed. I would love to have more time and the ability to press the left button. I need the car in the back of the picture so I can go back. And do it a little better. Always in hindsight, I try to look back and think, how do I do this a little better? Please, on these cars, give us some suggestions for how we might do that a little bit. One question again is what do other towns do in a community that everyone in Clearlight is supporting? Would you answer that question? That's a good question. And I'm not going to pretend that I'm the person in the room with the most experience, knowledge. I'm not the, does anybody else in the room have any ideas? Or maybe you've seen something in other community that you want to share with us that might be helpful in Clearlight? As far as? She said, what are other communities doing to keep their roads maintained and their towns looking good? Middle Town, what group is that, right? You have to be.
Well, a lot of people don't realize that when we incorporated, we became our own entity. So when you look at the budget, you say, why is Middle Town lovely? Why is the center lovely? Their budget, the county's budget is $180 million a year. Our budget is just a hair over $4 million a year. Where's the council?
And I've been here a long time now. And I'm not political.
And we definitely have those comments. If you have any ideas for things that the community can come together and do that might be helpful, please write them down. We're open to any suggestions here. Joyce?
I'm sitting right here. Can all the council members stand up? Because there are some people, whether or not that don't know our council members. So, you know, we have our, I'm going to let the air take over this part. And money is over 10. I sit on the city council. I've sat on the city council for 10 years.
I am your current mayor in 2014, Denise Luuscler. I have lived here pretty much my whole life. I'm from a generation here. So I definitely want the best for our community to grow and to better ourselves with whatever resources we have and whatever we can come together as a group and get additional. And this is our vice mayor, Gina Mortino Dixon. Not my current producer, but as she said.
I'm a graduate of Oakley High School. I was here as a teenager, one of those people that couldn't get out of here fast enough. And yes, you came right back the minute they were out in another community, trying to make a difference, working really hard to make some changes. All I kept thinking was, wow, we need this back home. Why am I doing this here when I'm tied to the community back home? So I think that is here I am.
I'm Joey Lewis. I'm on the council also. I also grew up here. Family's had property in Lake County since the 50s. Been here my whole life in the city of Clearlight. Yeah, I'm enjoying my time on the council with all these lovely leaders.
I'm Jerry Splitter. I've been here 30 years. Two of my daughters live here. Eight of my grandchildren live here. I own the building on Lake Shore and Moni. Girlfriends have developed that building with my husband for 20 years. And also I think this would do some relaxing.
I appreciate your input. I have to look at your side. Oh, last question. Who wants Gina to do this activity again? Oh, only me? All right. So now's the time when I'd like you to take a few moments and collect your thoughts right behind on these three by five cards. And then head over to our loving man, city manager, and grab some dots to go ahead and answer the rest of the questions. The council? The five of us who will stay in the room will hang around and be available for your questions and comments. Do you feel like any more?
Yes, perfectly. We're edifying your actions. Like I said, Jerry, I don't understand the person who why Clearlight doesn't get very much help from us to help.
Is he a guy? Or is he a county clerk? Oh, he's not a part of the county, right? Part of Lake County.
Actually, I believe that if we have a strong advocate at the county level, there should be more funds coming this way when opportunities arrive. I believe that there should be an advocate advocating because the need is greatest for this to do.
The county and the city are two separate governments and we have our purview of what the county is responsible for monetarily. Sometimes it does not need to spend those funds outside of the jurisdiction that they were intended for. So some of the county funds that are assessed at county cannot be spent outside of county areas because it's due to Clearlight kind of being owed sometimes.
Okay, you know what? The county spends about five times what our general fund is in the city just on social services. So to say that the county doesn't put money into our cities is all at heart. The reason the city was incorporated was to drive by certain services that citizens here at the time thought were lacking. And that was mainly wood service, that was roads, and what else? Code issues, that sort of thing. The things that we're here discussing today. So to say the county doesn't put money here is not true. The veterans, coinage, I mean, there's tons of services that our citizens can get through the county. Special districts, sewer, those sort of things. So what we're, you know, what the city's focused mainly are those other services in roads, infrastructure company works, parks, police services, and code building department. So those are the things that we provide. That that small city budget that we do have in here was that our general fund is 4.2. 4.2, so then, you know, various grants and that. But yeah, that's how it works.
Our whole state and local town.
What was it here?
We have 80 town camps, right? But it's not obviously the city.
The city's portion is 1% plus the half cent for everything. I also, so, so they said 1%. And that's one of the things I want to address. I hear very offhinged from individuals. Why pay my property taxes? Yes, you do. But for every dollar for property tax, the city gets 14 cents. That property tax is allocated to a variety of entities. For part of the county, for instance, special districts that have a taxing burden, part goes to schools, a large part goes to schools. So when you pay your property tax, it doesn't all go into the city. And what I'm going to explain that to the people that have not realized is same with the sales tax. So it's, and then I was going to make along the same lines and comments as this council member list is made. In terms of funds from the county, they're expended within the city. There are expenses within the city. The question would be, I suppose, to the border supervisors, are there additional monies that could be allocated? And not allocate some because of the city's ability?
I'd like everyone to be able to maybe correct Joey a little bit. I was the original chairman of the incorporation committee. And the committee was formed to determine whether we could create a city that was viable. I told people who came to our meeting, if you want to pave your street, you're at the wrong meeting because becoming a city, you will not get your streets paved. It takes money to pave your street. And just because we become a city doesn't mean we're going to have money to pave your street. What I figured at the time was there were periods when 2 o'clock in the morning, the sheriff's deputy that would be available would be in uplift. And if we had an emergency here, it would take a half hour, 45 minutes for that person to get to the problem. My feeling was if we can have better police protection, local control, we don't have to go to the Lakeport and go to a planning commission meeting. We don't have five supervisors, four of whom don't live in our area, representing us. And everything else remaining the same, aren't we better off? We determined we could be a limited service city. The money was there. And what limited service meant was we don't have sewer. It's a county district. We don't have water. There are three separate water companies within this city. We don't have fire protection. It's a district. So most cities handle all those things, generate income from those things, and have expenses because of those things. We don't. By my thinks, we would have been better off staying with the county. And we're, and I argue about it sometime. And I think one of the big issues is the streets. And I do believe the county did a little more to maintain the streets than the city seems to be able to do. With that said, I got to go. My wife and I will leave town at 10 o'clock. And I'm here. I would like to make a couple of comments. Number one, we need code enforcement. And I don't care if the tax passed or not. Somebody needs to start doing code enforcement. We got a home down the street, eight-foot solid fire fence is going up right now. And I wonder what they're going to do behind that fence. First of all, the eight-foot fence is not legal. And I assume they're going to grow marijuana. This city council passed a marijuana ordinance that I fought. I said, we don't have to allow it. We don't have to allow it. We have legislative mandate upheld by the state supreme court that we dissolve our redevelopment agency. We're in the process of that right now, and we currently have a, what's called long range property management plan with the state waiting for approval of that document. We've been waiting, we submitted it in October, we've been waiting for a long time. Once we have that plan in place, it will enable the city to move forward to develop some of the properties that redevelopment agency formerly owned. But we can't do that until that plan is approved by the state. Once that happens, and there'll be some activity that you will see, I think primarily with properties on highway fifty-three, that will definitely generate some, some jobs as those projects continue to flourish.
I may be somewhat repetitious in what I have to say due to the fact that even though I have a hearing aid on my mom's death, though, I might have missed a lot of things here. We're talking about code enforcement, and I think you hit it on the head there. Properly done, code enforcement pays for itself. You have the basic amount of money you must put forward, but you get that money back. Because they'll, they'll leave your property, and that ties it up. You can't, like, put your property, they'll pay it all. And in time, we take over that property, and we sell it, or whatever we can get off. And that includes, that's, uh, thing that we give you includes the time it takes us to make the phone calls or anything else, and all that, to getting all our money back. The other thing is, you talk about property using tax money. I've lived here for thirty-six years on a paved street, which I paid all my part for property. It is in such a condition right now that it needs to be replaced because for thirty-six years, there has never been proper maintenance done to that street. And right now, the street is dangerous, there's going to be an accident on it because of the condition of that street. And if I'm involved in an accident, I'm going to be looking for a lawyer, a lawyer. We called several weeks ago, and our pockets fixed again this year. No luck, no luck at all. The other, the other thing is, we keep talking about we don't have any money. Three times now, we've had a commune come up here and tell us what to do with Lake Shore Drive. They give us a plan we can't possibly do. It costs about forty thousand dollars to get this commune up here.
Take care of these two areas, maybe outside. I think we can work around that as far as the taxes go. I think we can do something better than raising my taxes. I'm looking here at the taxes. It's very like daddy in North Carolina, you charge me daily tax. I was like, you can't.
So it would be about police task force? How would they respond to the actual police department's students?
So I think what you're asking is, yeah.
Can I repeat the question? Question, can't hear it.
Yes, absolutely. So I think what you're saying is you're all for crime suppression. Did you put your gun on there for us?
Yeah.
And what, so the question here is that, can someone explain what's the difference between a crime suppression unit and what the police department is currently functioning? Is that correct?
Yes. Can I ask, Jonathan, excuse me? The crime suppression unit would be the task force within the police department. But it would also, the vision is, it would also include the code enforcement aspect and animal control. It would be a group of people working as a team. Even though they're within the department, their focus would be solely on crime suppression, code enforcement, and animal control. Those three things. We would have it be very visible, whether it's bright shirts, whatever it might be, if in fact we end up being able to read that. Crime suppression aspect focuses specifically on those individuals who may be in the community that have, that have outstanding warrants, give dedicated time to address those kinds of things that we, that we don't have the personnel to do right at the moment.
So this means you got to hire more personnel?
They would be, and it would be covered by the revenues generated from them.
That would be...
Be covered by the revenues that would be generated from the sales tax.
I see.
Hi, I'm Delia Leonard. I live here in Clear Lake. So what you were just saying about the crime suppression, I'm a little confused because we have Measure P, which you mentioned earlier. So currently, the police department is receiving a portion of our sales tax. So on top of the sales tax that they're currently receiving, that crime suppression would also go to the police department for them to hire additional police officers that would work in, like, the animal control and et cetera.
Correct.
Correct. So I just want to say, that's a little absurd to me to have an extra, to pay them more sales taxes. I was talking to someone earlier, and he mentioned that we're currently giving them about sixty-three percent of their income, so I don't know.
Let me, let me give just a little bit of background on Measure P. Measure P mandates that we, the budget allocate sixty-three percent of the general fund to the police department. And then there's Measure P that generates an additional amount of money. And there, there's a mandatory requirement to, to address those mandates. The, if, if what the council places on the ballot, if there is something placed on the ballot, and it is a general tax, sixty-three percent of that general tax will have to go to the police department because of Measure P. And we have, I wanted to make certain before I made that statement that it was accurate, that we have had legal counsel look at it, and that is accurate. So if that's the case, how do we address the fact that that additional money can go there? That is why I indicated code enforcement, everything would go into that, we would move code enforcement to the police department, so that we're getting the highest benefit of those dollars going, going into, into that program.
Just real quick, follow-up question. So you said if, if they pass it to be a general tax, meaning that it would, you know, they could use the money to allocate however they wanted to. So if, if the citizens or the Clear Lake Council decided to not do a general tax specified, it'll go to roads or court, code enforcement, would it then not go to the police department? Because it would not be a general fund, it would be a specific fund?
That would be a decision that would be made by the council when they make the determination. If they decide to put a specific tax on the ballot, they certainly could include crime enforcement with it, but it would be identified under the expenditure plan that would, that has to go with a specific, a specific tax.
I just wanted to confirm, did you say sixty-three percent of the general fund go, plus a half cent sales tax goes to the police department right now?
Yes.
So sixty plus a half cent. I just needed to confirm. I want to show that number.
If I could explain what I understand of Measure P, which is kind of confusing. At the time when Measure P was on the ballot, the, the concern was that we would fall below a certain threshold of safety officers to keep our community safe. So where was that, eighty-six?
It passed in ninety-four.
Okay. So in nineteen ninety-four, what it reads, not verbatim, but basically what it says in Measure P is that the city must continue to fund the police department even though they're getting a half a cent sales tax, up to the threshold of the staffing level that was in existence in nineteen ninety-four. Now, I'm going to venture to say that we probably need a whole heck of a lot more staff now in the police department than we did in nineteen ninety-four, solely because there's a ton more people here. I'm not speaking in numbers, not about this, but there's a lot more people here, living here, there's a lot more crime going on, and, and so we do, we do have a need for that. If there were ever a time when the city met the threshold of staffing level in the police department, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would not have to continue to give sixty-three percent of the general fund budget to them. We could then reallocate that money somewhere else as long as we maintain that level of staffing.
What is that?
Measure P also mandates that the staffing level would be one officer per five hundred population. So for us today, that's thirty officers on the street. That, one per five hundred is an FBI-based statistic based upon crime level. Normally, I shouldn't say normally, because I think there are communities that are at one per five, but in cities that don't have that higher crime rate, it's usually one officer per thousand or fifteen hundred people. So once we, and Councilmember Cortino Dixon is absolutely right, once we've reached the threshold, threshold that Measure P mandates, then the sixty-three percent can be reduced. Well, that's, we've lost some officers recently. I think right now, we are at about seventeen. We are just bringing some on for sure. And we do have fewer officers today than we did not too many years ago. And right to your right, one of the questions that was raised to me during the time that we were putting the dogs on were, were jobs, and if we had more jobs, then we may not need this. And I just wanted to indicate that we are working very diligently to put in place updated planning documents that hopefully will be attractive, and I think they will be attractive, to people that want to keep their businesses here, which will increase the job.
So Roy and then over here.
And Councilmember Lewis just commented to me, and he's absolutely correct. We also have redevelopment, if you recall. We have legislative mandate upheld by the State Supreme Court that we dissolve our redevelopment agency. We're in the process of that right now, and we currently have a, what's called Long Range Corporate Management Plan with the state waiting for approval of that document. We've been waiting, we submitted it in October, we've been waiting for a long time. Once we have that plan in place, it will enable the city to move forward, to develop some of the properties that the redevelopment agency formerly owned. But we can't do that until that plan is approved by the state. Once that happens, then there'll be some activity that you will see, I think primarily with properties on Highway Fifty-three, that will definitely generate some jobs, so it's projects.
I may be somewhat more prejudiced in what I have to say due to the fact that even though I have a hearing aid on my mom's death, well, I might have missed a lot of things here. We're talking about code enforcement, and I think you hit it on the head there. Properly done, code enforcement pays for itself. You have a basic amount of money you must put forward, but you get that money back. Because they'll, they'll leave your property, and that ties it up. You can't run with your property if they break it off. And in time, we take over that property, and we sell it for whatever we can get off. And that includes, that's the thing that we give you, includes the time it takes us to make the phone calls or anything else, and all that, to getting all our money back. The other thing is, you talk about properly using tax money. I've lived here for thirty-six years on a paved street, which I paid for when I bought the property. It is in such a condition right now that it needs to be replaced, because in thirty-six years, there has never been proper maintenance done to that street. And right now, the street is dangerous, there's going to be an accident on it because of the condition of that street. And if I'm involved in an accident, I'm going to be looking for a lawyer, a lawyer. We called several weeks ago, and our popo's fixed again this year. No luck, no luck at all. The other, the other thing is, we keep talking about we don't have any money. Three times now, we've had a conman come up here and tell us what to do with Lake Shore Drive. They give us a plan we can't possibly do. It costs about forty thousand dollars to get this conman up here. One of them was Dan Overmeyer, to get a plan that cost ninety thousand, which was impossible. The other thing is, you get a tax back from this, from the state on, on your road tax that is the symbol meant to take care of the paved and excepted streets in the city. You can't use that money on dirt streets, you can't use it for anything except the maintenance of our streets. And that's not the, I don't know what you people are doing with the money, but you certainly are not using it the way it's supposed to be used. What else can I say?
I don't know what to say to that, Roy.
My name's Alvaro Hidney. I see there's, to me, it seems like there's three parties here. There's no on each, yes on each, City Council. And I see the no on each people are here with the cut the fat, and I think, you know, they're, they're important too, you know, financial responsibility and accountability, that's always a good thing. And one time I voted no, and the next time I voted yes. And I voted no, because I don't want taxes either. The next time I voted yes, because I just, I'll do whatever it takes, you know, because I feel like I'm paying the way, I'm paying. The second time I voted yes, then I'm paying, if I pay more, a little more sales tax, or I'm paying by the little, the value of my house going down, a little crime, things gassing, siphoning, the crime goes from bad to worse, you know, so next time I vote yes. And also, the, the three parties, the no, yes, of the City Council, and thank you, City Council, I kind of think before, seems like you guys are real aggressive, and you want to do something here, and a lot, I think it was a good council, because it really seems like you guys really want to move forward and do something. So thank you, Roy. You kind of opened up the door for me a little bit, saying the code enforcement makes money. I don't know if that's true or not, but if it does make money, is there a way to, like, use that as a selling point, saying if it makes profit, a certain amount of profit goes to the legal dumping that's going on around the city? Because that's also, that's kind of a copycat crime. You know, there's a, there was a thing we did last year, there's one street we cleaned up that was dumped on, and it was there for like three years, and a year later, it's perfect. It's almost like cleared that up, and they're like, they're gone or something, they're not coming back there. So I'm just a way to harness that. Another thing, I know there's a lot of, I work for the water company, and there's a lot of vacation homes around the city, along the lake, some, a lot of them are nice ones too, and a lot of them are second or third generation, they've been here for a while, but you can tell the kids or their grandkids kind of look, and they're not as apt to come up here anymore, because they kind of feel like they're driving down, you know, they drive down like what their grandparents seen was a nice street, now they see the dumping. So I don't know if there's a way to tap into the vacation home property and add something, because I see it's all taxed, and I'm all for the tax now, because, you know, accountability of people, keep them accountable, that's good. I don't know if there's a way that, more than just tax, if you tap into the property taxes, forcing people who don't have trash service, like somehow, I don't know if that's legal or not, tap it to make them have trash service or something like that. Also, another thing is, one of the no on each people, I'm afraid I'm going to know, and he was afraid of that, he was going to be on vacation, and his place is going to get tagged, and then also he's going to rack up his bills for a month. So I don't know, there's something in there, you can write into that, make contact with the homeowner, and then start the process or something. So I don't know if you can ease it, make it user-friendly, but I know it's not all just like the marijuana grows, it's more like, I mean, it's more of the, I mean, people are responsible, that's their deal, you know, but they had their lifestyle, but the trash coming out of the house, whether they're growing something or not growing something, there's the trash, you know, that's what we're kind of looking at at enforcement part. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
I'm helping you, Delia, Terry.
I got my assistant. Okay, so I noticed that in the police department lot, there are volunteers for these vehicles, and I know that a lot of the sheriff candidates that are running right now are mentioning the debate that the sheriff department has volunteers as well. And I was wondering if we could recruit more volunteers in policing? I haven't seen those vehicles move, they used to drive around, like, say, two years ago, they were a part of the community, and, you know, just their presence alone would deter crime, and it would deter people acting stupid at events and things like that, even though it's just a volunteer policing. So instead of, you know, paying for crime suppression, couldn't we tap into the large amount of volunteers that we have? Because there are multiple people that have said on various Facebook sites, especially like county community awareness, that they would be willing to volunteer for code enforcement or, or volunteer for policing. So how do we tap into those people? That's your question.
We do have a very active volunteer policing program, the B.I.T. program in the police department. The number fluctuates, you know, depending on circumstances. I think right now, we're twenty, twenty-five percent of volunteers, which is pretty significant. And they, there are some that are out. Could there be more visibility? Absolutely. And that, I will take that comment back to, to Chief. That's, I think, a great suggestion. I did want to comment on code enforcement making money. The city can't make money. There, you can generate the revenue needed to cover your costs, and that's where the administration can obviously, that's where they can't, you can't do a full profit type of operations. And as properties are, assuming they become an active program where you are going in and doing demolition or that sort of thing, you do have to have the upfront money, which Roy did identify, and those do come back and go into a development account, so that we always have those, those funds available to, to continue program. So I just prefer by, that'd be a full profit type of operation.
So just to clarify what you said there about that, you can't, the city can't jump, the city can't let the funds, however, and they can't do it very expensive.
Yes.
So the cost of code enforcement could be covered through five. Okay. And the next thing I want to clarify was the statement that Mr. Hughes made about marijuana enforcement. This code enforcement would not, the money for this would not come to pay for the enforcement of the marijuana programs in the way that it was explained to me, because that's going to be handled through the police department? Is that correct? How is the enforcement of the medical marijuana codes going to be handled? Will it be handled through the monies brought in through this, or through the police department funds?
That's a very good question. The ordinance is, what, is essentially a code enforcement ordinance. If the, if the code enforcement department, which we don't have anymore, if it becomes part of the police department, if it's moved under that umbrella, then the code enforcement personnel will be operating in the police department to enforce. Does that answer the question?
So would we, this tax would not take that? That's my question.
If it's a general tax, or even a specific tax, and crime suppression has been identified as a component of the, for the expenditure of the funds, then code enforcement, we would create that team, which would be crime suppression, code enforcement, including animal control.
Okay, but the way that the medical marijuana code enforcement or code is written right now, there is an enforcement aspect of it, and how exactly can it occur?
The ordinance is primarily zoning driven, and it is being handled through the limited staff that we have. We are actively going after those large rows in terms of what we can do from the zoning standpoint, which is, at this point, generally, the fences, which were identified. One, in one afternoon the other day, we had a little inspector tag, eight fences, so that type of thing is, is going through. We're identifying large rows, more commercial for the end rows, as opposed to ones that are identified in the ordinance, where we can have a number of plans per size of course. So we're looking at those from a zoning standpoint, we will do what we're able to do. But, so, if, to get back to your, your question, if, if that unit is created, those code enforcement people will be in that task force, and they, but they will operate under the ordinance in place of time, it depends. Is that...
Okay.
I also wanted to just make a comment for those of you who don't know about code enforcement. I, I've been here about twenty-five years now, and I've heard, when I very first got here, it was roads, and then it fairly quickly changed to code enforcement. I don't know how many of you are aware that seven or eight years ago, there was a determination made by the council at the time to completely eliminate code enforcement, which has resulted in a huge backlash in the community from what I understand. And all of the code enforcement staff at the time was laid off. So we're trying to, and, and the staff actually was directed to indicate to people coming to the counter that we are not in code enforcement. Well, that's just a message in the community that if you want to come out and do it, you not going to have to pay my rent yet. So we're trying to address that, we're going to eliminate code enforcement now, we do have in the budget some limited funds to do some training, that was, that was an issue previously as well. I want to make certain that our staff is trained to do it properly, so we don't end up in litigation, and address those health and safety issues as the priorities. Does that already make everything happen? Absolutely not. There's a huge backlog of activity that needs to be handled.
Just to clarify, when she said the decision of the council, that was the previous city council, it wasn't us.
And I was there, I saw you.
That is a very good distinction. This council has made code enforcement a priority goal.
Yeah, I was wondering, calling in on the budget issue. For the last year, there's been complaints about the city mishandling funds, not using the funds properly. People have asked, the ones that assume that there's issues with the budget, to pass proof, no one has proved anything yet. Terry, before you leave? I, I just, I know that you mentioned that we had proof at one time.
Of what?
About mishandling of the budget.
In the way that the funds have been spent in frivolous manner? Yes, I'm not saying...
And what my guy said over the last year to you is, we need proof.
That's not what we're discussing today, but how we, we're going to discuss that in a different time.
Um, if you're really concerned with the budget and how it's planned, go to the budget workshops, better than anybody get the true answers, not rumors.
They're coming who I got to the budget workshops, and they are a load of fun. I'll meet you there, I'll bring your flags.
Number one, I remember when we had code enforcement. Uh, no, code enforcement was not laid off. What happened was, that marvelous useless dog catcher we have, he used to be...
Let's compliment him first, now.
And that person now.
That's what I'm doing, Gina!
So anyway, he used to be in code enforcement, and Janine Low basically quit. But, the thing is, I had brought up a year ago, this, when they decided to do animal control, and I remember how it seemed about happening, I suggested that, since your animal control is driving around town supposedly all day long, when they drive by a place that's not real clean, why can't they just jog it down? And turn, turn it over to you, don't? Sure, why not?
We actually do keep a list of the code enforcement complaints that come in, and if they don't fall within that health and safety standpoint, they, they remain on the list, so that when we can get to them, we do get to them. When I say health and safety, we have, we have situations where we have people that brought older homes onto the property, they have no sanitary availability for disposal like that. Well, that's, that's the kind of thing that we're, we're trying to address. As we think those up, then we move out of that list and go through to a higher risk standpoint. If it's not, it's, I'm not saying that code enforcement, in any way, shape, or form doesn't have a priority, every code enforcement complaint is a priority, but it does rise to impacting the specific health of others by contamination of ground matter, trees, and that sort of thing. So that's, that's what I think I say. Are there any other questions or comments?
Again, I am for code enforcement, I agree with that. I think that you do do code enforcement, I think you people really already think about needing to put it in there. I remember back in the days, I was in law code enforcement, one best when I saved it from a really good child, loved him, absolutely, and when the boss said, we would still let that child. And I, by the way, in court, people, people, nice attitude, delivered, brought up, brought one of the big choice, batched up in their clothes and stuff, and I got to work with some of these people, I was like, he's back to the end of the day. He batches trinkets, they were okay, I don't need my trinket, loaded up, new paper, just give it to them, so I don't know how you work with that, you know, if you're like, I couldn't do it, fifty-five, fifty-two.
Any other questions? Okay, again, we really appreciate your time this morning, taking your time out on the Saturday, it is sometimes difficult, we appreciate that you did that, we appreciate your input here, and this, that dialogue as well, so thank you. Again, please look at the website, Melvin Hayes, types of things, and specifically, this one is going to be discussed accordingly for your council, your continuing report is important, and if you have comments on any, any other item, please feel free to contact us and call, and let us know that, and we'll try to respond to those as possible.
I watch my life, please, I love the camera. The website, if there's any questions?
Not actually a question. I want to thank everybody that put on this meeting tonight, because I'm not able to get in at night, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you say the website?
Oh, the, the website is clearlight.ca.us.